It is 6:04. That is loud. It is 6:04 PM, so we'll call this meeting to order. Director Bysel, if you could take attendance, please.
Director Jessica Dressley?
Here.
Director Lisa Hadeen?
Here.
Director Carrie Tate?
Here.
Director Becky Bysel, here. Director Brian Davis?
Here.
Director Mike Reese? And then Director Stephanie Mom.
Present. If everybody could stand and remove your hats for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence to grieve and give thought to the Robb Elementary School victims, families in the community of Uvalde, Texas. Thank you. So things are going to be a little weird today. We have Chair Davis virtually. And because he is meeting via electronic means, all votes will be done by roll call vote per Minnesota Statute 13 Delta Point 03. Director Bysel, I'm not going to have you read everybody. We'll just kind of roll through it if you're okay with that. So at this time, if I could get a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda, please.
So moved?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call vote to approve tonight's agenda. Director Bysel?
Yes.
Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Mom, yes. And Chair Davis?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next up on the agenda, if I can get a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the April 27th regular board meeting, please.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call vote to approve the minutes for the April 27th regular board meeting. Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Bysel?
Yes.
Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Mom, yes. And Chair Davis?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the May 2nd special board meeting, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call vote to approve the minutes for the May 2nd special board meeting. Director Bysel?
Yes.
Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Mom, yes. And Chair Davis? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to recognize the visitors. I want to thank the community members and everybody that are attending online. We really appreciate you being involved and being here tonight. For the entire community, all the items that we are going through today, the agenda are available to the public and on Board Book. And then we'll go into announcements and recognitions.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to call up any of our staff that are here who were our employees of semester or our employee of the year, as I know I saw some of them. Right up at the table. So while they come up here, just to remind everyone, the process that we have on a yearly basis is every semester, our employees select six employees to be an employee of the semester, first semester and then second semester. And then the 12 people go back out and the entire staff has the ability to vote and select an employee of the year. And so with us, we have the spring semester. We have Tamara Butler, Hastings High School teacher. We have Jamie Clark, Hastings High School custodian. Tom Fritzi, high school teacher and interim dean. Brooke Johnson, Hastings Middle School counselor. Kim Meyer, Kennedy nurse. And Chris Waggey, Hastings Middle School teacher. And also with us is our employee of the year, Mindy Tavernier from the middle school. And so as is our practice, we like to recognize at a school board meeting officially our employees of each semester and our employee of the year and wish them congratulations, but also have them come in front of you as a school board as a way to recognize them as being nominated by the other staff in the district for this award.
Does anybody want to say anything?
Thank you to everyone as well. I appreciate it. It's been overwhelming with a lot of people connecting with me. And it's really been nice, like I told the middle school staff today, that kind of my story from teachers that I was taught when I was in middle school and high school, connecting with me about this all throughout, all the different places I've been. So it really has brought a lot to me and reminded me of how everyone has been part of this journey for me. So I appreciate everyone and all the staff here have been amazing and contribute to what I've learned. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. Congratulations again.
All right. Next up for items for discussion, we have Mary here with United Way. You want to come up?
Yeah, so we have Mary Malik and we have Jane Newmiller-Boosted. And we'd like to bring them up to share with you some of the exciting stuff that the United Way is working on that directly links to our kids and how the district is partnering with United Way Hastings.
Thank you. So my name is Mary Malik and I'm the executive director of the United Way right here in Hastings. And with me is Jane Newmiller-Boosted, who is the Helping Kids Succeed manager for us with our youth initiatives. And periodically, United Way would meet with the school board. It used to be in the spring, right after allocations. And for those of you that are not familiar with allocations, basically, United Way funds other groups and other initiatives in the community, as well as our own initiatives. And so groups can apply for funding each year. And every spring, it seemed like I was coming to the school board and letting you know what we funded. And it's been a couple of years. So I'm so happy to be back and let you know some of the funding that we're doing with the school system. So for 2022, we ended up funding several programs with the school district and related to the school district. The Positive Behavior Program at the middle school. Through Community Education, we funded the after-school program that they are developing for the middle school. We also funded the Community Education Disabilities Program and the Youth Enrichment and Recreation Program. And new this year, we funded Canvas Health, which we just think the world of all the counselors and all of those, everyone really, in the school district that's helping our students with mental health challenges. And not only our students, but our faculty. So important to have that service available. There's also another initiative that we fund, and that is the Communities in Schools representative at the high school. So Communities in Schools was something that we brought to the school district a couple of years back. And we looked at it from a perspective with the community where the community really wanted us to focus our efforts on youth. And so in working with some other groups, we decided that we could fund a full-time position at the high school with some help from the school district. And this person provides support services at the high school. And she's done a tremendous job. Cal O'Leary is her name. And really, we started that program at the cusp of COVID hitting. And so she got thrown into it like everyone else and has just done an amazing job connecting with students that need a little bit of extra help. And the stories that we've heard are just fabulous. From a student really not even wanting to go to high school because he or she is so far behind on things, to Cal meeting with a student almost on a daily basis and families with a student to put goals in place and a plan and helping these kids graduate so they can be successful. So I know with Superintendent McDowell, he's also looked at communities and schools and having a representative at the middle school and potentially in the future, a second person at the high school. So we're here to support you as much as we can. So Communities in Schools is another initiative. Also, maybe some of you have heard about the Food for Kids program. And that's the Weekend Backpack Program. It's a gallon-sized bag of food and snacks. That seems to be the most visible program that we have in support of the schools. And again, it's helping these kiddos so that they can come to school nourished on Monday mornings. They may have some challenges at home. And so we're giving them a bag of food to cover Saturday and Sunday and give them a little bit of boost and help out those families. So that's been a terrific program for us. For those of you that don't know, United Ways are here to help those in need. And that's what we do. Sometimes that comes out of crisis. And more than likely, the local United Way in Texas is on base with the families there and they're providing crisis services. We've done that at Hastings also. When we started with the pandemic, we established the Response and Recovery Fund. And we helped students with that, with the funding from that throughout the pandemic and other organizations in the community too. So sometimes out of crisis, there are initiatives that get born. And I'm going to turn it over to Jane now, who can speak a little bit about the Helping Kids Succeed initiative that was born out of crisis about 10 years ago.
Press there. Got it. Thank you for the opportunity. I've been working with Helping Kids Succeed for a little over eight years now. And in that period of time, I've worked with the schools, partnering with the counselors at the high school in particular, to identify what we call emerging leaders, students that wouldn't necessarily think of themselves as leaders but are recognized by fellow students or by staff members. And we invite them to come and participate as a member of our YES team, YES meaning youth empowerment and support. And those young people learn our Helping Kids Succeed model. It's a seven-part model. And then they quite often are the ones who will go in and teach. We have opportunities to teach in the middle school. And then two years ago, we had an opportunity to teach the model in the ninth grade health classes. And the students love it. It's been, we have over 55 alums now. Some are married and having their own kids, which is amazing. And so that's been just a terrific partnership. We do also work, we have an organization or a group we call our Helping Kids Succeed Community Partners Coalition. And that group has been meeting for over five years. And we've grown from a group of five of us in a conference room to now we have over 250 names on our email list. And we have 30 to 35 people who attend regularly, including our superintendent. Our principals have attended. Some of our counselors have attended. Some of our school board members have attended. Yep, our school resource officers have been there. Yeah, it's a great group. Out of that emerged last year, our Mental Health Webinar Series. We did a five-hour series. Those recordings are still online. And then just recently, we finished our three-part series on opioid and fentanyl awareness. And I know a number of you came and participated and attended. Thank you. We really appreciate that. We appreciate the support. We reached over 300 people that night, those three nights, and then thousands more online. And so we're looking at whether we're going to do that again this fall. And if so, what different form it might take because we got some good feedback on what resources people are looking for. And we're also going to be partnering. We just got done communicating with the counselors about getting a new group of students to start with our YES team. And so kind of put together a little different program for the summer. It'll be one day a week for two hours. The students will learn the model. But then we're also going to really dive into marketing and communications, audience analysis. And at the end of that process, they'll come out with some marketing pieces that we'll use either for International Overdose Awareness Day or if we do a fall program or going back into the schools to use those as communication pieces for the schools. So we want the kids to get really hands-on experience participating. So full plate.
Yeah. And we couldn't do this without the generosity of the Hastings community. I still think of Hastings as a small-town feel. That's why my husband and I decided to settle here and raise our two sons all through Hastings School District. And we just are very thankful and blessed for the donations that come into United Way of Hastings. And we want those to keep coming because we're making huge changes and huge positive outcomes. And it's all from working together. We could not do this alone. Many people throughout the community stand up to help us. And we're pleased to partner with the school board and the school district on initiatives as they come about. So thank you.
At this time, I can open it up to board members if you have any questions. Otherwise, I want to, oh, Lisa, did you have, okay. Thank you so much for coming in, Jane and Mary. I think this is so fantastic to watch and see how different entities within the community can come together. And this really supports our students' success. So it takes a village, right? So I'd love to see this collaboration and partnership. So thank you for coming in.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
All right. So for first read, we have three different policies. We'll start with Policy 503.2, which is early admission to kindergarten. Let's start with that one. Is there anything for this one that we can bring back to policy? Can move on to Policy 513, Student Promotion, Retention, and Program Design. For this one, adding verbiage to address acceleration and deleting number four because it's already addressed in the previous Policy 503.2. That was the only change that came through policy.
So the verbiage in green, is that all brand new? Or?
Correct. Yeah, that's from MSBA model policy.
So did we have gifted and talented or all those other groups in any policy prior? Or this is a brand-new addition to our policies?
I would not be able to answer that one. I can bring it back and probably get an answer for you on that one, unless you know offhand. Yeah, it's new to this particular policy, but yeah.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
The next one is Policy 610, Field Trips. There are no recommended changes to this one. And for this one, we were just trying to get it on to our policy review cycle. So that's why we're seeing it tonight. Any questions or comments about that one? That one's pretty straightforward. All right, let's go into second read. We have Policy 203.2, which is Order of the Regular School Board Meeting and based off of comments from the last meeting. And then it went to Policy is Changing. Four, A, Five, and Six. So Five will reflect listening session summary and then Six will reflect reports and discussions. And then moving forward to, the goofy thing about this is, and we say this every time, I feel like, like we go through all these policies and then we have the policy summary. But you'll see that they're, moving forward, we'll see a shift in how we review policies, including taking off the MSBA model policy, that verbiage at the top there too. So we'll see those slowly go away. Pending questions about that one, we could actually do a motion and second to move this policy to an action item tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Just to add in there, one thing we've looked at. So in this order, so it's not listed there. But if you look at our agenda for tonight, in administrative reports, that student enrollment report is listed there. And just as a matter of, it's part of this. But you'll see those reports don't specifically get listed in this policy. But we're going to tuck that student enrollment report into the finance so that it's not its own thing. So this just seemed like the most appropriate time to bring that up so that you're aware of it as a board. The enrollment report that we've talked about before is still going to be there. But it's all going to be a part of the finance report rather than its own separate item.
And just to piggyback on that, one of the nice things that I see in that finance report with the enrollment is that there's a graphical representation. So if you're a data table reader, it's there. But there's also a graphical representation, which I think is also very helpful.
Thank you, Director Hadeen and Superintendent McDowell. That does make sense to put it under finance. So I appreciate that. We have a motion and a second to move Policy 203.2 to an action item. Is there any further discussion on this policy? Hearing none by roll call vote to approve moving Policy 203.2 to an action item. Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Bysel?
Yes.
Director Mom, yes. And Chair Davis?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next up, we have our administrative reports. Superintendent McDowell?
Yeah, so we have a couple of things tonight. And then I'm going to end with our strategic planning update. So a couple of things. Our food service program for the summer, just a little reminder about that. Because as we end the school year, people end up wondering about meals for the summer. And so we're going to continue to offer breakfast, free breakfast and lunch to students during the summer months. But the program ends up looking different because the waivers that have been in place through COVID fall off. And so we just have to do things differently. So here's what it looks like. Children 18 and under are able to eat free breakfast and lunch at our middle school location. This starts June 13th and it runs through August 26th. The meals will not be available on July 4th. Breakfast is then offered on those days, 7:30 to 8:30. Lunch is offered 10:45 to noon. So here's a change. The meals have to be eaten on-site. So one of the changes because of the waiver is people can't come and pick up the meals. The kids actually have to eat them there as part of the requirements of the program now. Parents and guardians may purchase a meal. Breakfast is $2.65. Lunch is $4.10. And all of the meals that we offer have to follow the USDA meal pattern requirements. So just an update for families that we're still going to offer the program. They'll see some changes. The biggest change being you got to eat the meals on-site. And that'll be offered at the middle school. On a positive note, those people that were able to, oh, sorry, Chair Davis, hang on.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent McDowell. I'm just wondering, in terms of those meals having to be eaten on-site, has there been any provisos put in place for any families or children that might have some access, points of access issues where the timing is off or they can't get there or they don't have ride, you know, those types of things? Have they ended up being taken into consideration?
The issue we end up having is the guidelines of the meals and it being on-site. I guess we'd have to look at specifically what those requests would be. But I think in the end, they would still have to fit within being able to eat the meal on-site if there was a change.
Thank you.
All right. Different topic. Monday at the high school, over $195,000 worth of scholarships were given to our kids, which is absolutely amazing. The program was two pages long of people. And again, to reiterate what was brought up with the presentation by the United Way, this community gives so much to our schools and to our kids. It truly is an amazing thing when you think about the size of our district and just shy of $200,000 going to kids. It's just amazing. So hopefully, people are able to be there. If not, it was recorded on HCTV, so people can see that. And then my next thing, because we didn't get a chance to do this, is I would like to officially introduce our new principal at the high school, Mr. Scott Doran, who later on this evening will be approved by the school board as part of the personnel report to assume his official duties July 1. He's currently the interim principal. But like I said, I wanted to make an official announcement. Scott came to us at the beginning of this year from Shakopee Schools, where he was in charge of one of their academies. They're at their very large high school and has had a great run so far. And so we are very excited and pleased to have Scott being taking over at the high school as we move into next year. Then I do want to go back to just the topic of Robb Elementary in Uvalde, Texas. And we've had a couple of questions about safety and security. And this comes up anytime, whether situations arise close to home or they arise nationwide, particularly on a scale like this. The questions always come up. What are we doing? Are we doing things? What plans do we have in place type thing? And so I just, I wanted to take a moment to just remind our community that the safety of our students and our staff is our number-one priority. That we have to have that. And we do have systems and processes in place. We practice those systems and processes on a regular basis at each of our buildings with our staff and our students. We, in this event, as an example, last night, yesterday late afternoon, we're in communication with our district team. We're in communication with our building teams, trying to ensure, even though it's not related close to home, what is the plan? What do we need to do? How do we need to be responsive to staff? What do we need to have in place? And if it were closer to home, that would escalate into our emergency response planning, which is a huge set of processes and protocols. It's something that we work in conjunction with our local law enforcement. And for families that were dropping off their kids today, they most likely saw extra squad cars around all of our buildings because that's how in tune our local law enforcement is with the schools. And they came out of the gates and said, "We will have extra law enforcement out and about just because we feel people are going to need to know that we're here." So I just wanted to let people know that even though an event that takes place so far away, it does put us into a spot that we are responding to and trying to make sure that we are taking care of our staff, our kids. And we know that events that have taken place close to home in Hastings create needs for staff, needs for families, and needs for kids who have experienced that type of loss or scary situations like that. For the school board, a quick one. Behind me, you will see a tub of popcorn that was made specially for you by our middle school LEAP program. LEAP stands for lifelong experiences and academic programs. These are kiddos at the middle school, and if you didn't know, they run a service and they sell popcorn. And so they were kind enough to leave this on my desk when I was out of the office today with this note that says, no one is butter than you. Please share this with the Hastings School Board tonight. And so they left bags and a scoop and popcorn for each of you to take with you as you leave. So what a great gesture, and they're a great bunch of kids. If you're ever looking for a cool program to go and visit and see their layout and their process, that's one I would definitely take some time to see.
Thank you to all the students that, that put that together. I just want to say very quickly, my daughter comes home after popcorn days and says, Mom, I had the best popcorn. And I say, well, where's mine? But now I can say, I got my popcorn.
All right, so with that, I'll get into our strategic planning update. And you will remember back in February, I did a strategic planning update for the school board, and tonight is the third installment of our strategic planning update for the public and the school board. And just to give people a reminder of what the timeline has looked like to this point, back in September of 2020 is when we started really digging into this process. And you will see on this first slide that we've worked through all of the components leading up to May at the very bottom, which is the third board update as per the superintendent evaluation timeline. We'll go a little bit quicker tonight, but kind of try and explain how everything fits together for those people that didn't see the, the last report. But essentially, we have two things happening in concert. We have a governance side and we have a management side. And the governance side, you'll see that there are three, three boxes that are green. That's because those three boxes have been completed and are in process. And that's the strategic roadmap, the three-year, current three-year work plan, and the superintendent evaluation. Those are in their first iteration and cycle of, of the governance piece. June 8th, the school board will be working through the long-range district model. And the long-range model is really that, that conversation that the school board has based on assumptions to try and understand what's the trajectory of the district financially, and what do we want the priorities to be? And so that's the one big piece that we really have to get, get in place. And then on the management side, I don't know how we got all that stuff, but, right? On the management side, I'm proud of our team because we've gotten through all of it this year. We have our district vision card we'll be talking about and spending a lot of our focus on tonight. We have our operational plan, we have executive summaries in place, we have elementary, middle school, and high school action cards, and right now is one of the monitoring reports. So this is our district roadmap. We have a mission, we have a vision, we have core values, and we have three strategic anchors right now, coming out of the first iteration of a strategic plan. That strategic plan is grounded in these desired daily experiences of students, staff, and families. And so this whole first iteration, and many people probably have experienced several surveys that have been coming out, that it says on there, this is what we're grounding to right now, is are we, are we in our first year of this meeting what we heard was the desired experience that us and each group wanted to have? What's on the, what's on the page right now is the board's initial three-year work plan. So this was developed in June of 2021. And you'll see on the left-hand side, anything that I've highlighted in green are those things that the board to this point has worked through a process. Doesn't mean that it's finalized, but the board has been able to have conversation. You'll see that in the second box from the top is that long-range planning model and establishing goals. And then there are some other things like the school board evaluation, a school board election cycle. Down in public engagement, there's some things about legislation, about choice enrollment, and technology levy option. These were things in June of 21 that the board at the time said, this is what we think the first year of the work plan should be. You'll see on the far right, there is a 2024, 2025 open spot. That's because after we get done with the long-range planning, the board's going to need to go through a conversation about how does, what do we do to shift one year out as the 21, 22 year drops off of the three-year work plan? So the idea is, as a board, you're continually working through a flow process. If everything is working as it should, because this has been a conversation for the board, these will end up being the big topics for a calendar year that the board would want to have on, to make sure they have on a discussion list somewhere, either at a work session or a board meeting, or work sessions leading into board meetings. So these could absolutely change and develop as we move through time. On the operational side, then those three strategic anchors drive our operational plan. So we've been focusing on engaged learners, effective operations, and communication and collaboration. And so these, a lot of the stuff that the board hears about are related to these three areas. That operational plan then dictates to our directors of departments what it is they should be focusing on from a priority set. And those directors then capture that on executive summaries. And so twice a year, those executive summaries get updated, and they cover what's been happening over the last 12 months, what's happening in the next 90 days, and what do I anticipate in my department that's going to happen over the next 12 months? So again, like what happened prior to the presentation last time, once we're done here, I'll be sending out the executive summaries again to the board so that the board can see where each of the departments is at, at this point in time. Then we get into the buildings. So the buildings also use the operational plan for guidance, and they develop their action cards, they're building improvement plans based on very specific things. So for example, inside of engaged learners, we're really focused on mental health. At the elementary level, we're focused on literacy. At all three levels, we're focused on student engagement. We're focused on effective instruction. And so if you were to be on staff at staff meetings, you would see things like discussions about our, our teacher appraisal process, and what does that look like as it relates to these things? You would be engaged in conversations at the elementary level, in PLCs, around what's happening with literacy, what are we doing? You would be engaged at all levels with conversations around mental health, and what are we doing to support that? All leading up to, again, tonight, to our first iteration of our vision card. I anticipate this will change over the next couple of years. I think it will get refined. But the ultimate goal, and what was the board's goal for me by the end of this school year, was to get a vision card that had defined, how are we going to measure what we're tracking? And can we get a first baseline set of data into this report? That's what the goal was for this year. And so what you see now in green are pieces of assessments or data points that we have collected, but we don't yet have the information yet that we can put into a baseline. So for example, while MCA tests are done, we don't have that information. We'll get that towards the end of the summer. But we're going to start capturing that so that as a board, you're able to start seeing a trend line, and we can make, so back to your long-range planning, what are the resources we want to put into what stuff? As a board, what do you want to direct the administration to refocus, to focus new, to drop off? Don't spend any more time on, on this. What do we want to add more to? That then becomes the board work as we move forward. And so hopefully, the whole system starts to feel like it's fitting together, and you as a board are able to feel like the decisions you're making at the board table are ultimately directing, back to the operational plan and the building improvement plans, what is happening in the classroom? And it's, and it's all something we can then track through metrics that makes sense. Because we could have some of these things that after two years, we'll have a retreat and say, I, I don't see how that data is really telling us what we think it is. And so as a board, then, we would have a discussion with administration and say, okay, what else can we use? Are we asking the right questions? All of that kind of stuff. But this is the baseline of that. And so you'll see the things in white, non-highlighted in green are the things that we don't yet have access to because the school year's not done. Graduation rate, we don't know yet. So this is our first iteration vision card. We're, we're right exactly where we thought we would be and where we need to be. But what I do want to do is bring up our elementary, middle school, and high school principals, because I do think it's important, back to making connections, that they give you an update as to where they are at this point in the school year with regard to how the strategic plan and the operational plan are now making their way into the classrooms and impacting kids. So with that, I have our esteemed elementary principals at our presentation table.
Well, thank you. Right away, the literacy part, like you talked about, was under the strategic anchor of engaged learners, and we'll be in the process of analyzing those assessments here this late spring, early summer. And so BASS is listed on there first, and that is an individualized assessment where teachers sit down one-on-one with kids and listen to them read at their level, analyze those results. And with that being a one-on-one assessment, we literally take that all the way to the end of the school year because it is one-on-one with kids, and they, they continue on with all their instruction, and they find times throughout the day to squeeze those assessments in. And when we analyze those things, we, we take a look at how our kids that were, that started the year maybe a little below grade level, analyze how those students are doing, ones that started at grade level and above, and some of the other demographics. Yeah, hand it over.
So second significant area for us at the elementary level is that social emotional learning. And when we think of our last update in February, since then, our students in second, third, and fourth grade were given a survey, and we've been able to look at that a little bit, and it, it ties back to the desired daily experience that Superintendent McDowell showed just a little bit ago. And it gives us a glimpse on how students are perceiving it. And I'm going to give you a tease on a few pieces of that that we've been noticing. So I feel safe at school. Second, third, and fourth grader responding to that, 97.5% at the elementary level. The adults in my school care for me, and I trust them, 98.3% of the students responding. And I have good friends at school, is the third one that we wanted to share tonight. 97.7% of our students responding positively to that. I just, we, we just wanted to connect with that, kind of like Superintendent McDowell just talked about the recent events from yesterday. Safety, relationships at the elementary level, at all levels, but at the elementary level, with the amount of time you spend with a teacher, it is significant, it's time, it's energy, it's, it's a lot of care and nurturing, and it's validating to have that. We did not have that in place, so that strategic plan, kind of bringing that to light, what can we use? And having, I think it was like 10 or 11 questions, it gives us a baseline. There's still some work when we talk about our second step curriculum and school-wide expectations. All three schools are talking about that. What are the successes? What are the areas to grow? And then thinking about what's that plan for next year? That's still work in progress, but those are significant pieces, timeliness in, in the country, but also because of that care and that nature that our teachers and all staff do, it's kind of a pat on the back. The students are feeling it, and it, it may seem like it's long and draining, but the kids feel it, and you should feel good about that. So I think that's important for, for the board to hear.
And then finally, as we work through our, our student engagement walkthroughs this year, our 5D model really gave us a foundation and some specific language of, what are the strategies and processes that we can put in place so that our students are really active learners and engaged? And so that, that's been a really good experience. Excuse me. And then using the, the survey that Kyle was referencing earlier, we really have been able to identify, how might we then use an area that our results are showing us we have an area to grow in, and then connecting that back to a student engagement goal for next year? So that's pretty exciting work to really see things coming into alignment. So, thank you very much.
All right, I'll bring up our middle school. Looks like Steve Kovach and high school, Scott Doran.
You first, maybe.
I'll go first, Mark. So we, our goals for this year were the students academically on track. And we, we kept it purposely sort of broad, looking at students, the number of students that are passing, that are passing grades in all of their classes. So just in pulling some of that quick data, excuse me. And we're still kind of weaving through and waiting for the quarter four, obviously, but the quarter two and quarter three data started off in quarter two with about 89.4% of our students passing all of their classes. And, and then in third quarter, it was, it dropped a little bit to 87%. So really, it's, it's the 138 to the 200 kids that, and it could be that they maybe just didn't pass one of their classes, so they didn't make it on that list. But this is one of those things where Bob said, where Dr. McDowell said that, you know, we have different iterations. We're already looking at this and making sure that we're asking the right questions, and do we need to dig a little bit deeper and look at some different data, too? So, so that's that first part. We did have recovery services for students after, after school. A small number of students, we got signed up, but the students that did participate, super successful, just got a ton of one-on-one help after school, and that worked out really well. And then we're also making our pyramid of interventions. That MTSS is going to be a goal area for us. We're, we're in the process of working on our action card for, for next year in that goal area. So making that MTSS and utilizing potentially a, a new person to help us with that process. Similar to the elementaries, we're still weaving through the, the data that we're getting from our walkthroughs and using, looking at the areas that could be potential, potentials for us to focus on one to two areas of student engagement and, and make that our focus moving forward. So that's a, it's a whole pile of walkthrough data that, that we're collecting and, and getting through that and honing in on what we want to make sure that we focus on for next year. And then that clarity of communication is, is one that is, has been kind of a push this whole year. We, we have a staff satisfaction survey that'll be going out. We had a family engagement one. We also had a student engagement survey. Our, our data from our student engagement survey was awesome also. I don't have any specifics with, with that, but it was super positive, and we shared that with the staff and, and kind of celebrated a little bit because we, we, we saw a lot of the same things that the elementary buildings saw, too. And just focusing on those staff and, and family communications and making sure that we're over-communicating, not too much, but making sure that information gets out to, to families, so.
And if you don't, if you don't know this off the top of your head, that's fine. But the recovery services, you mentioned that there were only a few students that took advantage of that. Do you know if it was lack of interest or logistical issues or something else causing that?
Well, I, I think the, the group of students that we focused on, it could have been logistical. Ironically, though, because we did have, we did have transportation, ironically, though, the, a majority of the kids that signed up were walkers. So they, their parents were like, yep, they'll be there, you know? So it, it was smaller than we wanted, but it still was like really high-need students, like they really needed help. And the students felt a real, like just hearing from the teacher saying they were speaking, using academic terms where they maybe weren't before that. So it was like some really neat things happened, and they were catching up on their work and feeling like they were having success. So yeah, so I think that's something that if, you know, we continue, we'll get ahead of it a little bit more and be a little more proactive in making sure that we grow those numbers.
Thanks. Thank you.
Again, thanks for having us. Just a little update on some things we talked about in February. Specific, the two main goals at the top for the high school, the ninth grade success, very, very strong PLC, professional learning community that meets regularly. Really, the goal is to focus on those freshmen who had for the past, I don't know how many years, had been identified as, as a higher failure rate, struggling to make that, that transition from eighth to ninth grade. transition from eighth to ninth grade. We started the year out in, the failure rate first quarter wasn't crazy, it wasn't anything outlandish at the high school, but of those kids who hadn't passed classes, 40% of those Fs, those no grades, no credits, fell within the freshman ranks. As we worked through the year, just by the end of third quarter, that had reduced to the 24% of whatever failure, failures there were, which is more in line with one of four grades, if you think about it that way. We're, we're working over the summer a little bit, going to pull a little bit of that leadership team together and do some work and tweak that goal, but it is something that is so strong and so ingrained in what we do now. We're thinking about also how we can help those sophomore teachers, if you have specifically sophomore students coming out of that ninth grade group, how to continue that, that support and those strategies. Similar to what Steve was talking about, we have a very, very strong credit recovery program. During the day, we had some success study halls where kids, instead of going to a study hall and, you know, looking at a magazine or not studying, we're working on credit recovery during the school day. We also have a very strong, large numbers of students earning credits at night through our ALC. And then again, our summer school is going to kick off here June 13th, and we don't know exactly what numbers are, but we're in the triple digits for how many kids have recovered credits this school year, which is fantastic. And they, you know, rate or connect time out of that ninth grade group. We're planning on eight separate two-day sessions next year, so basically two every quarter where we block the day, you have a little bit longer class time, and then the second day, you have a large chunk in the afternoon for specifically freshmen, but all students who struggle to meet with teachers, work in groups, connect with their peers. The advisory piece also is a very strong initiative of ours, again, leading into some mental health, student connection, participation, daily advisory time. And just a little stat there, a survey they took at the beginning of the year, and again this spring, those kids that feel connected to at least one trusted adult went from 64 to 79%, a 15% increase on those kids reporting that they feel safe, they feel, you know, connected. And the nice thing about that program is those advisory kids, if you're a ninth, 10th, 11th grader this year, you go 10, 11, 12 in that same advisory, and you get a new set of freshmen coming in. So that family dynamic and that connection stays with you for four years. And then again, just like the other levels had said, definitely working through those student engagement observations through those walkthroughs and just kind of, kind of tweaking that system and really figuring it out. It's all new to all of us, so really what that data can show us in terms of district-wide student engagement. Thanks, everybody.
So our next steps, as you might imagine, we're going to collect the remaining data that we need. A couple of the principals alluded to, they're going to be working on their action cards. What do they need to change? What worked, what didn't work? Because remember, this was our first time through this process. We'll make some adjustments to that operational plan, probably not a ton. And then we need to populate, this probably take throughout the course of the summer, we'll populate that vision card with those data sets. And so my goal would be that as we, as a school board, start having conversations then for next year, you'll have a vision card that's got some completed, that has the completed data on it, so you can have that conversation about, okay, what does this mean? We can, we can bring administrators in, we can bring teams in, kind of start having the, the next steps conversation. And again, then the last piece is the building principals, a part of our goal for the year internally was for them to be able to be in a place where they're able to talk with staff and share what's the direction for our building when we hit the fall, before they leave for the end of the school year. So that's, that's kind of the timing. So they're at a great spot to be able to say to their staff, even if they don't have the definitive tweaks of the goal set out, they're able to say, we're going to be focused on this, this, and this next year. And people then can leave for the summer and know what to expect when they come back in the fall.
Thank you. I don't have a question, I just have a lot of excitement. Strategic planning can be hard to, to link the, the work effort to the outcome, and this is that link. Like, all that work that we did, talking about, you know, who we really are, what do we want our students to experience? This is so exciting to see that vision card and those measurements coming to fruition and leading us to what I think are just going to be really meaningful board discussions as we, as we integrate into our long-term planning and the, and the financial issues that we have in front of us. This is just coming together at such a nice time. I, I don't think it's going to make those conversations easy, but I think it's going to make them very, very rich. And, and it's so valuable to have this at this time. So thank you very much with such a timely presentation. Thank you.
I was just going to say how exciting it was too, from that day, the board meeting, that smaller, you know, we used to meet in to, to now, it's kind of fun to see. And I think it'll be fun for the new members to see now what we've worked on, and now to see the data and have the vision cards in front of us and continue the work for the next few years. So I think that to actually see it happening is really exciting.
Next up is building, the building construction fund project update.
Okay, so just a quick reminder that the building construction fund accounts for the money that the district received from the voter-approved bonds that were for school renovations and improvements. A few updates since last month's report. The high school tennis court replacement project is now complete, and then two projects were moved to in process, the two that we approved bids for last month, the middle school storage building and the high school carpet project. And then if you look at the in-design section, it's continuing to get smaller, which is good. And then after, later tonight, there's two projects that are in that section that are for bid awarded, so that'll get even smaller. And if there's any questions, I can take those.
I do have one question. Are we still on track to finish on time?
We are working very hard at that. I would like to say yes, but there is a possibility that there might be some delays in product or, you know, things that we just can't get, but we are working very hard on completing everything on time, yes.
And that was kind of my, my expected answer is that, you know, we're, there's only so much you can do when you're waiting on supplies, so thank you for, for that. All right, next up, we have the fundraising report.
Okay, so the fundraising report comes before the board two times a year, in May and November, and it is for completed fundraisers. So tonight, the report shows the fundraisers done November 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2022. Our building level principals and leaders submit the details on the fundraisers, and the report is available. I won't go through it, but it outlines the fundraiser description, how the funds are raised, what the funds are used for, and then the net amount that was fundraised.
Next up is student enrollment. Are we going to discuss that, or?
We just have it as a hold for now, and then next month, it will, it will show up right here as part of the finance report.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're not skipping something, so, cool. Next up is Director Hadeen with her ISD 917 report.
All right, thank you. I will take exactly zero credit for the graphical layout and all of the detail included in this report. I was involved in forwarding this document to Becky. That was the extent to which I participated. The executive assistant at 917, who by the way, won the Minnesota State Executive Assistant of the Year award, provides this document following our board meetings. It summarizes the primary actions taken at the meeting. It is, it is clearly not minutes. Those are, just like us, they're available on their website, and they are currently using Boardbook. But this really highlights the things of, of import. So here we see the pictures of our employees of the year, and some of the personnel work is on the second page, if you want to keep scrolling down, that would be great, thank Not surprisingly, when like, when you look at our personnel reports, there's a lot of changes coming on in this time of year. I think 917 is in a constant state of effort to fill all of their positions, and the needs are very high, and the work is very challenging, and unique qualifications are required. So I think it's interesting on this, this box, in particular under personnel, is to see the range of personnel that are serving, that are just, just a one-month snapshot of recent hires. I think that's very interesting. And then someday, I imagine we will get to a place that is similar to what 917 is, is at with regard to their policies. Here again, the executive assistant is running a policy tracker and identifies which policies are up for that year. They're reviewed by the administrator that, that they're most relevant to, and then they come forward for action. So they, they have like a different number of policies than we do, but they're, they're in that like operational side of the annual review that we're, we're striving to get to. And so it's really encouraging to sit at the table and hear that. And unless I hear something differently, this is going to be my intent of what to include, just because I, I want us, I want everybody to, to keep the importance of 917 at the forefront. And as we were listening to the, the high school principals and our strategic plan updates, and we're talking about student engagement and student enrollment in some of the programs that are available, quite honestly, Hastings Engagement at this time, specifically with the career and technical readiness, it looks like it, at DCTC is, is a little bit lower than some of the other districts that are participating in 917. And I think that's, that the more that we talk about it in public, and the more that we're aware of it as board members, that those opportunities will be more visible to our, to our staff along the way, and then to our families and students. So, thank you. I'm really excited about this opportunity. I think it's going to take me a little bit to get my feet up and moving, but really excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hadeen. Does anybody have any questions for Director Hadeen regarding 917? Just want to say it's really nice to see an update on 917 because they are very integral to our district and, and all the, you know, the region. So it's, it's good to know that, how they're doing, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. I think so too. I think just, just keeping it in the forefront of our mind is good. Just for informational sake, 917 runs their organizational meeting in July. I was going to say June, but they run it in July. So I joined it the last quarter, as opposed to halfway through the year, for a range of reasons. And so we'll, the 917 board will hold their org meeting and set their next year's meetings starting in July, and do the same, and do any committee assignments that take place at the same time. Their committees align very closely with ours. And, and so that will, that update will look like an org meeting update. So one more schedule to keep in your head, like the potential number of calendars running. That, that one's a little bit different than ours even.
I didn't know that, thank you for that. If you would like, we can go right into finance committee. Director Hadeen?
All right, thank you. I'm going to trust that everybody is up and ready to read the minutes from the meeting. We didn't have any actions coming forward for the board tonight. And some of the things have already been reported out. For example, the ESER positions, that's already been reported out, just because of the timing of when that committee meeting was held. Preview, preview drip, the 2022-2023 adopted budget will be coming to our board for adoption in June, at our June board meeting. We will be having a finance committing, meeting prior to that. To this point, we've been hearing a number of the assumptions and, and getting good information about where Jen's backchecking that and who she's benchmarking against. We have a few things, she has a few things that we would normally know at this time that we don't currently input from the federal or state level. So again, she's going to make educated assumptions, which we may or may not have detailed information on, but, but that will be the big finance piece coming to the board in June.
Thank you, Director Hadeen. The next polit, well, policy committee summary is, is the next summary that we're going to go through. And so Director Dressley, Director Hadeen and I had met with Superintendent McDowell and Becky Garcia on May 19th. We, we had, it was, it was a really good discussion about, you know, policy versus procedures. So we will see a shift moving forward where we're going to create essentially like a procedural binder, so taking procedures out of policy so that way, if we do make changes to, or if, if we identify a procedural change, it doesn't have to come back to policy to, to revamp. We can make those changes, or administration can make those changes appropriately. Go ahead, Director Hadeen.
No, I was just going to clarify the use of the pronoun there. If we move to where it's a procedure and the policy states we have a procedure with regard to, you know, something, then, then procedural maintenance and updates and best practice integration would be the administrator's responsibility.
Yes. Thank you for that, but that doesn't mean that procedures are going to be taken out of policy or the board as a whole. It's so one of the, and you can see in my notes here too, that, you know, one of the questions that we will be asking is, we see that there's a procedure, or we identify that there's a procedure, a part of this particular policy, are the procedures in place? If the answer is yes, good. If the answer is no, then we will say, okay, well, we need to make sure that there are procedures in place. Which goes in line with the second point of the school board, we have procedures ourselves. So we discussed where would those procedures fit? And, and we're thinking probably the handbook. We're open to ideas, so if, if you want to, to discuss that, but just kind of identified a few different items that, you know, we need to ident, or we need to develop procedures. So thinking that when, if, if the board can agree on, yep, policy 215 needs procedures aligned with it, we'll put it into the handbook, we'll probably bring that to a work session, discuss that, so that we can all come to agreement on what those procedures look like, get that into the handbook, and then we'll, so that, we'll see this handbook kind of grow too. But another reason why we need to have the handbook reviewed annually. Agenda items, there's school board member development, and then, you know, one of the things that was requested was the school board member request to the, to the, to visit the schools. We talked about policy 503.2, which is early admission to kindergarten, policy 513, student promotion, retention and program design, policy 610, field trips, policy 530 immunizations. So this one, administration is going to work the procedural side of, of the policy, which includes that enrollment packet, the school information nights and the wellness letters to, to go out to parents. And then policy 203.2, which is, we already went through that one, that went to a second read and is, there was motion to put that on as an action item. Policy 206, public participation in school board meetings, that is going to our work session in July, so that we can discuss that as a board as a whole. Policy 432, you will see that as an action item later on, there was an administrative rule number change that we can go right into adoption because it's a minor change. Policy 208, development, adoption and implementation of policies. So this, this was a really interesting one, and I know Director Tate and Director Dressley, you both sat in on phase three, phase four. I, I did it as well, and so did Superintendent McDowell. But one of the things that, that came out of that, a lot of things came out of phase three and phase four, but the, the recommendation of how do we approve policies? So our current practice lines up with, we have a first read one month, then, you know, if there's no changes or minor changes, it goes back to policy. Yep, we're good to go, let's get it to the second read. And then at that meeting, like we did with, with 203.2, is we can then make a motion to put that on as an action item. MSBA, they kind of, they said, okay, either way is, is good, so I just want to preface that. We could change it to the first read be in month one, second read month two, and then the third month would be the the third month would be the motion to approve. So essentially taking an entire quarter to approve a policy. So that's something to consider. I'll open to either or. I mean, there's, there's pros and cons to both of them. I have seen, or we have seen, I should say, policies that have taken anywhere from five to eight to 12 months or not at all because it goes to a first read. No, we need to make all these changes to this. And then, you know, we go forward with a work session, so it can take months to develop a policy too. So there's, there's no, there's no right or wrong way to do it, as long as it goes to first read, second read, and then it can go to adoption. And then the Policy 300 Series, this, this will absolutely take some time to develop, review and, and then to refine it too. So we'll continue moving forward with the, looking at the, the Policy Series 300. It will, it will come to a work session so that we can discuss how we want to move forward as a Board with that particular series. And then our next meeting is, we're not going to be meeting in June because there's a lot of things going on in June. So our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, July 11th.
I just have one question. Do you have any kind of a timeline in mind for discussing the, the 300 Series as a working session?
We don't have a particular timeline set. It's, it will take time. I don't know, Director Dressley or Director Hadeen, if you have any, anything you want to add to that. We, we did not set a timeline, no.
No, I, I think the conversation in this, this has come up is that our next few work sessions are full, really full. And so what I think it, it takes would be a, maybe while an agenda is being built for a Board session, the Chair, Vice Chair and Superintendent can look at the outgoing schedule or maybe when we do our three-year Board Update Review or, or, I have got to get that terminology down, sorry, I was just flinching. When we do our Governance Work Plan, thank you, we can have a, put a placeholder in for And it also, in my estimation, leads to a greater conversation about the degree to which we develop policy and procedures separately and where the, the overlap is, because that's, that is a philosophical decision for the whole Board to make.
I believe Chair Davis had a question as well. Go ahead, Chair Davis.
You're on mute. I'm sorry, it's 2:17 in the morning. So Vice Chair Maum, I know that when we did some work last year in terms of the Policy Committee, we started going to twice a month. Are you guys at that point now? Are you still thinking you can get through, aim at through some stuff with a, get some months of a meeting?
That is an excellent question. You know, we are meeting in July and I think it would be good to have that discussion at that time in July to, to figure out, maybe we do need to increase it to twice a month so that we can push through this. I think the holdup, you know, to Director Hadeen's point, the holdup will be getting specifically Series 300 in front of the Board at a work session. So I anticipate a, a little bit of a delay, but once we have that conversation as a whole Board, we should be able to move forward. And I think we can set our, our schedule and our, and our pace at that time.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the Community Engagement Summary. Director Bysel?
I'm going to actually have Carrie do that. I was unable to attend the meeting that night, so.
Director Tate?
Sure. So we had, or I should say Bob finished the, or, no, they're not finished. Finished think tank sessions with local healthcare and finance and banking. And the next think tank sessions are with local hospitality, manufacturing and automotive and building trade professionals. That's just kind of a, a way to get to know the details of how we want to interact with these different industries. As far as the middle school project, they would like to have a STEM night. The subgroup had reported this, that they want to have a STEM night for students and families next fall. They also would like to bring in people from the community to help set up tables to do STEM activities with students. And they would like to do the back, they'd like to bring back the in-school quote, "reality check" event, where it provides students with real world, kind of on-the-job experiences. When we were having the discussion, it was kind of also making sure that students understand what it's like to live in the real world with having a budget and expenses and all that kind of stuff, all that kind of fun stuff, I should say. And then they had some future ideas as far as doing a community and school pride type of an event and Community Involvement Fair at Todd Field in August. We talked about that, that we're only going to meet this summer if needed and then we're going to discuss in September if we're going to meet every month or every other month.
Thank you, Director Tate. Next up, we will go into our action items. First up is the Consent Agenda. Excuse me, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Go ahead, Chair Davis.
Sorry, trying to find my unmuted. There is a piece on there, one of the pieces in Consent Agenda has to do with the increase of subpay. And I'd like to, if I can, remove that and make it an individual action item.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, Chair Davis, you are making a motion to amend the Consent Agenda? And pull-
Pull number seven? Item seven? Non-contract rates of pay?
I'm looking for it right now.
It is item number-
I just want to make sure that I have the, the correct-
Item number 7A7 dot A dot 7, non-contract rate of pay.
Thank you. All right. So right now we have a motion on the table to amend the Consent Agenda.
I don't think it requires a second. It's a pull something from consent. It's not required a second.
I thought it did.
I'll second it.
Okay.
So it doesn't, it doesn't die for a second?
Right. Is there any discussion about pulling that out of the Consent Agenda? Hearing none. Let's just, and I'll, I'll look into that too, because now I'm, I'm questioning myself. So we'll just, we'll just do a roll call vote to approve that amendment. Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Bysel?
Yes.
Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Maum, yes. And Director Davis?
Yes.
All right. So we have that pulled out. That is the non-contract rates of pay. We will add that as an individual action item. All right. So we have a motion in a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Any further discussion about the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, by roll call vote to approve the Consent Agenda. Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Bysel?
Yes.
Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Maum, yes. And Director Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries. Reload my screen here. Items for individual action, we have the Bills Payable. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the Bills Payable, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I just, I know that this was part of the Finance Report. I just wanted to thank Jen for all of her work in updating the format of the Bills Payable. It's much easier, I know, for me to comprehend and to read and then appreciate the extra report she's also started providing to, to the Finance Committee.
Thank you for that acknowledgement, Director Tate. I, I would want to, like to point out that the extra report that, that Jen's providing to the Finance Committee is just a resort of the, of the Bills Payable by vendor to, to allow just a, a different look at the exact same data that's provided to the public and to the rest of the Board.
By roll call vote to approve the Bills Payable. Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Bysel?
Yes.
Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Maum, yes. And Chair Davis? You're on mute.
I know. Yes, I don't know, it wasn't working for me.
Motion carries. Next up, we have the Minnesota State High School League Resolution for Membership. And I believe, Director Bysel, is this a membership that you, or a resolution that you read?
I just have to ask for a second-
Okay.
-a motion, or, in a second, and then just say it's resolved, unless anybody wants me to read the whole entire thing.
I think you can just say as stated.
I move adoption of the Minnesota State High School League Membership Resolution and ask for waiving of the reading. Ask that the reading of the resolution be waived.
Second. Any discussion about this?
I just have a quick question. This is something we do every year. This is just a typical, so next year at the same time, I'll see the same exact thing. Perfect. Thank you.
To clarify, the only thing that was new this year, and I think it was valuable, is Minnesota State High School League does ask that the Board acknowledge reviewing their Why We Play video. And I think that, to me personally, that even as a, as a parent who's had to watch that video in the past, or who gets to watch that video in the past, it elevated this resolution in my eyes and I think it was very valuable.
So we're adopting the resolution as written for the 2022-2023 Resolution for Membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
By roll call vote to approve the Minnesota State High School League Resolution, Director Bysel?
Yes.
Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Maum, yes. And Chair Davis?
Yes.
The resolution is passed. Next up is the ISD 917 Long Term Facility Maintenance. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the ISD 917 Long Term Facility Maintenance, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
So it's the same question, is this something we see every year? Okay, thank you.
It, it is that time of the year, Will. Yep, yep. And then throughout the summer too, you'll see a few more. All right. Any further discussion? All right. By roll call vote to approve the ISD 917 Long Term Facility Maintenance, Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Bysel?
Yes.
Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Maum, yes. And Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries. I was just going to bring that up. So Policy 203.2 does not reflect, I don't see it on, or did we skip over it? For approval. We, we can go into it. I, I have, I did build it into my script. So, can I get a motion in a second to approve the adoption of Policy 203.2, order of the regular Board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? By roll call vote to approve the adoption of Policy 203.2, Director Bysel?
Yes.
Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Maum, yes. Director Tate?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries. And then I'm going to go, I know the next item is request for future topics, but let's talk about the, the last individual item, the non-contract rates for, of pay. Can I get a motion in a second for the non-contract rates of pay, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Chair Davis, did you want to discuss that?
It's truly not a point of discussion. The only reason I swear to be ruling the Consent Agenda is because of the way things have been, many full-time contracted teachers have been acting as subs quite a bit when need be, which means that there could be potential for my wife to get called into a subbing position and it would involve her rate of pay. So I'll need to abstain.
This one doesn't. This wouldn't be that case. This is for substitutes that we're hiring to sub from outside the district.
Oh, I thought it, I thought it covered the temporary substitution as well.
Nope.
Oh, my bad, I could have left it in there. Sorry, guys.
No, I, I appreciate your due diligence in that. Any further discussion? By roll call vote to approve the non-contract rates of pay, Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Maum, yes. Director Bysel?
Yes.
And Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Let's talk about requests for future topics. And I'll open that up to, to the Board.
I would like to request a security protocols overview for the Board, understanding that that would have to be done in a closed session.
I'm just noting it down.
Chair Davis, yes, sir.
Chair Davis?
I would just like to buttress Director Tate's request for that and try to get that somewhere as expediently as possible. I know it'll take a couple of weeks to get it somewhere, but I think if we do that as an individual piece in a special session, we can really focus on that, get that knocked out. I think it's important that we try to get it done, you know, sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Chair Davis. Director Hadeen?
Thank you. Just to reiterate a piece that came out of the policy and to keep, keep it on track is, as we look at the upcoming work sessions, I would like us to look for some time to have a schedule around updating the handbook, not about doing the update, but about establishing a schedule for updating the handbook and identifying roles and responsibilities. And within that, have time for a kind of a policy and process philosophy conversation. And I'm just saying that to keep that on the, on the list, not because I feel like it needs to have the same expediency that maybe educating the Board about our security protocols would. Thank you.
Yeah, that sounds good. I know the handbook will have been in place for a year this fall. So maybe, you know, we, we have that discussion. I, I know that our work sessions and our, and our meetings are going to be- I know the handbook will have been in place for a year this fall, so maybe, you know, we have that discussion. I know that our work sessions and our, and our meetings are going to be pretty, very, very full over the, over the next few months. So maybe, you know, September, October-ish, like, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I cut your mic out inadvertently. Yeah, I think that's sort of the time I frame. When we look at doing the long-range management plan work through, through the summer, I would anticipate maybe that September-ish timeframe, September, October, before we have to dig into the next budgetary work effort, budget reduction work effort, October and November. So maybe if we could just, just slide it in at that time. Just a placeholder. I just don't want us to not do it.
I'd like to make an addition kind of to that. I think it pairs well with it. But adding to the handbook as well, kind of board communications and process flow overall so that we all get on the same page as far as expectations and, and understanding.
No, that's a good one. So what I'm going to do, Director Tate, is add that to, I have a Word document up for the, the policy summary. And with the procedures, I was just kind of making a list of, you know, potential things for, that we need to add in for the school board. So I'll definitely add that one in. That's a good one.
I do have another one. I have a few more, actually. I was busy this afternoon. I want to make sure that we don't lose track of this, and I know it was on the strategy plan, but I want to make sure that we understand that what's going to be involved with timing, but that is moving to even-year elections. And for the public, that is to get away from the costs that we incur with having to have off-year elections, as well as the, it eliminates the infusion as far as where do people vote? Because you vote in your normal voting location.
No, that's a really good point. So it is, it is costly to do, to run the elections as, as a district on our own. Plus, the logistical side of it is astronomical with how much the, the district office has to work that piece. So essentially pulling Mrs. Garcia out for, what, two and a half months prior to an election and running all over the place. So yeah, that is, that is definitely a concern and something that we'll have to visit.
And I guess, I assume that we would have to work with the state on that, and it would have an impact on the terms of whoever is running next time in the following election as well.
Yeah, I'm, I certainly would support having that conversation. And I do think those pieces around levy renewals and term limits, not term limits, but term end dates and start dates needs to be part of the conversation about, does this change happen? What would be the consequences of that change? And when does the change happen? I don't think we can presume that there's a change to even numbers until the board does the work.
Director Tate, did you have a few more?
Yep. So, and this was a conversation I had actually a few months ago with, with Bob and Brian regarding school signage and having consistency maybe for throughout the schools and clear understanding of what, what should be up, what shouldn't be up, what, you know, that kind of thing. So I, for example, messaging about cellphone usage or things like that. And then along that same line, I was, I understand that there is a big challenge for teachers in managing cellphone usage during, during classes. And when I, I only looked at the high school, but it's in the handbook and references the discipline policy, but I don't see that we actually have a cellphone policy per se. And I'm, I'm curious if that's, if that's something that we would want to develop.
Just to piggyback on that, my, my initial response to the previous issue around consistent signage, if it's around cellphone usage, is that almost verges on a management question. But the question of, of a policy, maybe it belongs more at a, at a policy meeting. Start the, that would be a topic that would start at the policy meeting and then come forward from there. So we should put it on our policy review list. The conversation did happen maybe a decade ago, when all of a sudden cellphones became prolific enough that, you know, young humans had them. And there was an articulated decision not to implement it, but it's certainly worth revisiting.
Yeah, and that's kind of along the same lines. I noted that the, you know, the discussion about maybe having a cellphone policy, probably bring it to policy. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, that's right. That was my intent.
Okay, okay. Sorry, is there anything else? All right. So next up, we have our future meetings. Future meetings are listed on Board Book, but our primary posting is located at the district office on the bulletin board. All right. Can I get a motion in a second to adjourn? So what we're discussing right now is the items for, for future topics, if that's going to be, if we're going to action those. I guess this is still fairly new to us if we, if we want to make that an action item. I mean, we easily can. Or do we feel it's necessary? I'm committed to them one way or another, so I don't know.
I guess my thought is if anybody opposed discussing these things, we would have that in the discussion.
Brian, you're on. Chair Davis, go ahead.
No, you know, Carrie just said, it's, my opinion of that is that if someone has an issue with something that's being proposed, can be discussed at that point. I don't know that we need necessarily vote on it unless it gets to the point where we have to. But if we're all in agreement that we have no problem with this item being added, or it goes to one of the committees or anything like that, I don't know that we need to necessarily vote on each and every one of those.
Thank you. I'm kind of in concurrence right now. We can always modify how we do this process. I don't see any issues with that. If everybody is comfortable with just moving forward and we can get a motion in a second to adjourn. Oh, yes, Director Bysel, sorry.
June 8th, it says 6:00 PM for a work session, but in my calendar, I put 5:00. Is that, is that right, about 5:00 o'clock?
5:00 because there's a special closed session.
Just making sure.
Thank you. Any other things? All right. Hearing none, can I get a motion a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Any discussion? By roll call vote to adjourn tonight's meeting, Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Malm, yes. Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Bysel?
Yes.
And Chair Davis?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.